Twenty dash twenty-one budget. And Mr. Manjos, who's the Finance Chair, is on the phone because he's traveling. And John Orjukowski is the Vice Chair, and he'll be running the meeting with Mr. Manjos, and then we'll be discussing whatever.
Sure.
Okay, Mike. So Mike's going to start.
Great.
Just make sure everybody can hear him.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I hope everybody can hear me well. If not, I'll scream a little. I really appreciate the opportunity again, just so everybody's clear, we started doing this, I don't know, maybe five or six years ago, where we would have discussions with the Town Council before they started working on their budget, so we were kind of all on the same page going forward. Historically, we didn't always have a good working relationship because the Town Council would make adjustments and Finance would end up reversing some of those things. So we decided that instead of trying to go that path, we tried to divide and conquer and work together to make sure that we come up with a budget that we're all comfortable with. So I appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to working together with Town Council and the First Electmen and the Board of Ed and getting this pushed through. Historically, the Board of Finance has left personnel management positions to the First Electmen and the Town Council because they are more involved in day-to-day management. We would prefer to focus on financial issues, fund balance, mill rate investments, all the financial implications that the budget puts out. But as far as deciding where staff is needed and where personnels and that kind of stuff, I prefer to defer to Council. So I'm sure Council will dive into all those details and we'll leave it alone as much as we can, as long as we can get the numbers where everybody's comfortable with. So I think it's important that Council goes through all those things in detail, but we will focus elsewhere unless you want us to look at something specifically. Now, going through the proposal as it stands today, obviously, the town side is about as light as I've seen it. The First Electmen made adjustments to their request, and the increase in the town side is down to one hundred and seventy-four thousand and change. Obviously, very low increase, something like a point six. I don't expect, since it's going to be at that kind of level, that we will spend a lot of time going into line item details. Obviously, we will dive into assumptions on the larger items, health insurance, you know, staff, that kind of stuff. We will drill into some of those line items, but as far as line-by-line going, I think that's, again, we'll leave most of that lifting to the Town Council. We're going to just look at the big numbers on our side. The Board of Ed has a substantial increase in this budget, roughly two-point-three million. That's after adjustments have been made by the Board of Ed and the Superintendent, I mean, and the First Electmen. So it's still a four percent spending increase. I think everybody's aware of some of the drivers of that. We had some insurance funding issues in the past that was underbudgeted, so that's showing a larger increase than probably normal. I know Board of Ed has been working very hard to bring us detail on where they expect they can make adjustments by the time it comes to finance. So again, I don't know where will that will go until we see where their numbers come in, but I know they've been working very hard on it, and I commend the Board of Ed and the Superintendent who's acting and the Finance Director, Ron, who's been working, I know, very hard to make this happen. So we appreciate all that, and we will dive into that. I think we will spend the majority of our time on the Board of Ed side, since, as everybody knows, the Council does not have privy over the Board of Ed budget. We do have a total, but not line item, but we will do what we did last year. We'll spend a lot of time talking about special ed, which is complicated and difficult to budget. We will also dive into transportation, medical, and the overall payroll accounts, which are kind of the major drivers. This is the approach we took last year. After drilling into some of these, we discovered some issues that we're still dealing with today. We are reaching out to Brown and Brown to try to finalize and get some more detail on the medical side, just to make sure going forward, you know, we don't repeat mistakes that have been made in the past. So overall, I think we'll be comfortable once we're done with that, but it'll be, a lot of the work will be focused on that side because that's where the majority of the increase is coming from. This is also a year where we're looking hard at revenue. Finance will spend time with all the revenue lines, Tax Collector will spend time with. There is also some increases with the Town Clerk and some other areas that we're going to dive in and make sure with the Treasurer that everybody's comfortable with the numbers that we've got proposed. We may make some tweaks there as well. This is also a revalue. So the revale is something that gets done, and then you obviously deal with Board of Assessment Appeals, and we will have to make some estimates. So Finance will spend a lot of time with the assessor calculating risk, figuring out, you know, where we may have challenges collecting, and then make adjustments based on that. So the revale does, again, complicate things to get us to the mill rate, but we will eventually get there, and we have some history now with the last couple of revales of what that percentage needs to be adjusted and go from there. The mill rate is a concern. I'll be the first one to say it. Our mill rate currently is thirty-five fifty-eight. The proposal as it stands now brings it to thirty-six fifty-one, puts us basically the highest in Fairfield County, certainly higher than our neighbors, certainly outside of Bridgeport, one of the highest in the area. It's a challenge. It's something we're looking at closely, and we're figuring out how we manage that so that we don't put an undue burden on taxpayers and we still get the services we're all comfortable getting. So that's the juggling act that we're going to try to work through. We also have a couple other contingencies we want to talk about. We got issues, while our town pensions are very well-funded and health, there is still things that are held at the state level for the teachers, that there's been a lot of noise in the last couple of years about the state trying to push that down to the town. That current liability stands at ninety-four million dollars, just from Monroe. It's a staggering number, and that's not even including the OPEB and some of the other potential costs that are out there. So while it's not something that's carried on our budget, it is a concern from a finance standpoint because at some point that liability has to be paid by someone, and history teaches us that it usually gets pushed down to the taxpayers. So while it's not an effect this year, it's something we want to make sure we have a plan in place. We spend a lot of time, long-term, planning with pensions and increases and adjustments, and when we see things that are of concern, we're going to bring them up. How we handle it, we can all talk about, but again, our job, the way I look at it, is to make everybody aware of the potential financial implications of everything we're making decisions on. I think everybody's aware that I did write a little note about the teacher's contract when it came up, because again, I saw a concern that's going to put pressure on our budget long-term. And, you know, it went through, and it's been, it's the law of land, so now we will adjust accordingly, but I just want us to be aware of the potential issues that are coming up in the state of Connecticut, in the town of Monroe, and how the finances affect all of So our fund balance, we've done a nice job building. I think there's a good report in there at the First Electmen's Supply. We're at a healthy level, we're within range, but we are presently proposing using two million dollars' worth of fund balance. I understand the need to do it at times, especially when there's unforeseen circumstances and conditions that drive the need. The problem is, use of fund balance is not sustainable long-term. It can help you get through bumps, it can help you move smooth the increases, which is what we're trying to use it for, but eventually, that will run out, and those pieces need to get moved to the budget, which hurts. So I want us to come up on finance with a three-year plan that'll wean us. It's just not a long-term strategy that can work. It'll get us in trouble eventually, so it's something that, again, is on our radar. We don't have a solution right now. I can't imagine that we'll be able to push a budget through without using some fund balance. I believe in it, using it especially for contingency, because there are certain items in this budget that we all know are difficult to plan and budget for. So we have, we do have a budget with a contingency in it. That contingency is funded by fund balance, so we will, if need be, have a fallback plan, but again, long-term, I would prefer to balance it the normal way without using the fund balance. So basically, from my finance perspective, that's the plan. I know there's a proposed schedule in the budget. Again, I have not, we have not agreed on this on finance, we'll talk about it tonight at our meeting. But the First Electmen and I put together a proposal. It will call for us to have another joint workshop when it comes to capital. We have typically done this during your discussions, but our feeling was, the closer we get and later in the year, we'll have better ideas on what the revenues will be based on the mill rate changes, based on the state, based on a lot of more information, so we'll be able to hopefully do a better job and get better numbers by pushing it back to April. So again, if these dates work for everybody, we'll put them in stone. If they need to have some flexibility, we're happy to be flexible on whatever the Town Council works on. We are also always available if there's questions on a finance basis. I mean, if there's specific, you know, if they wanted calculations and implications, obviously Heidi's very good at this, and Ron's still available, but the Board is also available for any specific questions you guys have or want to share with us. Happy to try to give an opinion, at least, or at least where we see the financial implications. That's about all I got on my side. I don't know how you want to, if you want to open it up for questions, if you want to make some statements, Enid, on how you see it working, whatever you think is best.
No, I think we can start with questions.
Okay.
Anybody from the Council have questions? A question? A statement?
You gotta have some question.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, so Kevin Reed.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, Kevin.
No, I echo that. We've been doing this for quite some time. I think it's worked out really well, and most of us have experienced at least a couple of them. I think it's a good approach. Definitely interested in how, at least, as you said, Mike, you're not going to go through line by line, you're going to stick mostly with the capital F finance-type stuff, but from a Council perspective, it'd be good to see, you know, this is a responsible budget. I think it's a lot of thought went into it, probably, in my opinion, don't need to go through line by line, but it would be interesting to see if we can get some, some department heads, some of the key department heads. I think it's going to be Council's obligations and a responsibility to tell the First Electmen which department heads we're thinking of, but I, in my opinion, I'm sure it's
I would agree with that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not all of them. Certainly, I don't think we need to go through laborious department head presentations and what, but there are some that we should hear from. So I think that'd be great, and I know you're prepared for it, so.
And I would echo that, because last night I sat starting to go through the budget, and, you know, I went page by page. So the senior center, for example, spent a hundred and seventy-eight dollars extra, and that's point oh six, and it's a loss of point oh six percent. The IT, they have a five thousand and fifty-nine dollars, well, that was an increase of point seven seven. After the third one, the police, who of course had, you know, the fifteen hundred or whatever, whatever, theirs was a loss of thirty-five percent. So, I mean, I would commend Ken and the department heads at the time who came up with these numbers, because I felt like saying, gee, if I could come up with a hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, we'd have to do any of this. I could do fifty dollars apiece and get this whole thing done, which I know people are not going to want to do. So I'm just saying, but that's what I felt like. I thought, what a waste of my time going through page after page after page. So I would corroborate what Kevin is saying, not speaking to him tonight.
No, no, that's right, and the only other thing I was going to say, and appreciate that, Enid, is, you know, what Ron and Heidi do is, it just makes it so clear. So anybody that looks at this budget, welcome to look at it online, but it's just a really clear budget. We can, it makes it so that it's efficient and we can move through quite quickly, but obviously, the Council's going to have questions, so I'll, you know, I'll lean and yield to people that want to see, but I would urge the Council to try to, let's keep it to those, those departments that are complex, they have, you know, a lot moving on, there's a lot of moving parts.
Correct.
You know, we want to hone in on them, but it's good. Thank you, Mr. Callag and Heidi and Ron, really appreciate it.
Okay, still anybody over here, anybody over there? Jason, I'm sorry, you're going next, Sean. Jason.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jason. I agree for the most part that this is, I mean, you're looking at such a small increase. I know that there are some, we'll get into this a little bit later, it's too specific. There are some department heads that I know I want to hear from, not necessarily with some, some small budget questions, but also just an idea of what the money is specifically being used for and what the future plan is as to where that's going to lead to with other budgets going forward. So, and this is really our one chance to talk to them, so I don't, certainly don't need to pull in all department heads, there's no need for that.
So we'll do that.
But there are some that I think we should, having less so for questioning the amounts in there, but more so just to understand where their future plans and what the future goals are.
And that's our last thing on our big six to seven to whatever. Sean, you have?
I had one other question based off of what Mike was saying, which is, for capital discussions, are the, I know we're going to have the joint meeting later, but if there are specific questions on capital that we might want to consider in whether or not they are more appropriate for capital expenditures or for line item expenditures throughout the budget, is that something that we should be discussing tonight as a joint, in our joint meeting, or is that something we should hold off until that other discussion?
I mean, typically, we do it as one meeting. I mean, nothing's limiting us. Again, I don't, I'm not convinced this early in the stage, I'd be ready to make decisions about what moves on and what moves off until we, you know, basically, what I've always looked at it as, the finance job here is to come up with a number where we're comfortable bonding.
Right.
So, you know, I don't, I'm not really, I don't really want to be in the business of picking projects. I don't think that's the responsibility of finance. I think Finance's job is to basically tell the First Electmen and the Town Council what we can afford. So, you know, what we can handle as far as debt service, what we can handle as far as debt rolling on and off, as far as the specific projects and the, you know, magnitude and which project should be prioritized, I just don't believe that's a role of Finance. You know, I think Council, it would be great if you guys, you know, would prioritize and take things on and off, and then, once I see the numbers, I'll give an opinion, but I'm not really, I just don't believe that, I've always felt this way, that it's just, I don't see where it would be. Finance used to be much more involved in deciding what projects were done, and I just don't see that as should be our role.
Do we have an idea of that, what that number that Finance would recommend for bonding is at this point, or is that something that we would need to wait till later in the process for discussion?
I mean, we have not discussed it at this point. I mean, typically, the way we've approached it for the last four or five years is that we like to see a fairly steady line, and when I say that is like, kind of over, if you look over two or three years, I like to see consistent bonding and also consistent work getting done. I'm not one of these people who says, you know, I don't want to bond anything because then things just pile up. So I'd rather see us kind of consistently roll off debt and roll on debt. We typically have a spreadsheet that shows, you know, what's coming off on the budget. I haven't read all 211 pages, I'll be honest, yet, but it is sitting here on my desk. So again, typically, we roll off somewhere between four and five million a year. So in the past, the numbers have been in that range, that, you know, we've had a tolerance for. We did have a year or two where we've done, you know, seven or eight and done two the next year, so the average is out, depending on what the projects are. But as a general rule of thumb, I'm kind of in that four to five million range I don't get terribly concerned about, because I think that's responsible bonding, and it's keeping kind of our debt at a very steady level and a very, you know, straight line. I like straight lines, I don't like big swings.
Where are we on bonding rates right now in the sense of the trend? Are we, from your, from Finance's opinion, are we reaching that valley, or?
Well, it's funny, because, you know, a year and a half ago, we were all convinced rate was, rates were going to skyrocket, and, you know, they moved a hair and then didn't, and, you know, it's very hard to prognosticate rates right now. I mean, they are at a fairly low levels. They're not at the all-time lows, but they're at reasonable levels. I think the thing that makes it tough, because we also discussed this in our pension meetings, is, you know, election years are typical, you'll get bigger swings because of uncertainty.
Yep.
You will also, you know, you're dealing with now a little bit of a global crisis, which is going to tend to slow down a lot of economies, which will probably put downward pressure on rates. So I don't think we'll be in a rate environment that'll be, prevent us from doing anything. If anything, it might be an advantage time, advantageous time, but again, we'll be a year out, nine months out before we're bonding
Right.
What, whatever we decide on. So, you know, crystal ball nine months from now, hard to tell, because we'll now have a, you know, we'll either have a new president or we'll have another four years. And I think you could get very different financial implications from those outcomes.
Thank you.
Sean?
Hi, Mike. I just wanted to, you know, go over the macro view of the budget here, so I was going through it here a little bit, you know, just looking at a broader view of it here. Like, the original ask or increase for the town side was one twenty-three, two-five and change.
Correct.
And we got down to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which translates, and I think, you know, most folks should hear this number because it's quite sensational. It's an eighty-seven percent decrease in the original ask for the town side.
The departments, correct, yeah. I was impressed.
Hats off to the First Electmen for that. Conversely, on the Board of Ed, with regards to the original ask of two-point-seven-nine-four and change, and the revised number, which is still an increase of four percent, two-point-two-nine-four, that was seventeen percent contraction from the original number that was proposed. So I think it's helpful for, you know, people to maybe see and understand some of these percentages of decreases to these line items, or I should say, to these, to the various sides of the budget in totality.
And I agree with that, because again, sometimes people get caught up in, you know, hyperbole and getting excited about things, but I mean, you know, yes, the town increase is very small, there is still, and I'm not saying there's some need for it, but there's still a big increase on the Board of Ed's side, almost two-point-three million, and obviously, predominant part of the increase is there. And I think we all understand why, but it's good to have people actually talk numbers and focus on, you know, yes, we've got a big increase, and there's been some increases in schools, and we all know some issues, so, you know, we're going to see where this leads us.
Okay, anybody else have comments, questions? Mrs. Martin?
Mike, hi, it's Dee.
How are you, Dee?
How you doing?
Very good.
What is the designated fund balance as it stands right now?
In the packet, I know there's a chart, and it's got estimates for this year and last year, I mean, next year, so, which is something we haven't done in the past, which I think is a great new chart. And hang on, let me pull it up here. And again, everybody should remember that the fund balance is a moving target.
Right.
So we can give you the number as of June thirtieth last year, and then a projection for June thirtieth this year, based on run rates and what we proposed.
Here's a chart on page thirteen of my original presentation to Council, which has that, so.
Thank you, Ken.
Yep.
I was in the big book, so I was going to take a while. Page thirteen, okay. So basically, at the end of nineteen, June nineteen, based on this chart, it was just under fourteen million, was like just north of thirteen, and then it's projected to come down.
Ron's looking at the draft cap, or he'll give you an exact number in a minute.
I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Ron's looking at.
Ron was just looking it up in the draft of the cap.
The cap.
It's just north of, sort of, thirteen million, as of six-thirty.
And then projected to come down, looks like around eleven, Ron, is that?
That sounds about right, yes.
Just a little bit north of eleven.
Right, and then if we, if this budget is, goes through the way it's presented today, it would bring you
Nine and change.
Right around nine.
And what was, years ago, a few years back, when we went through the bond rating issue, what was the recommendation, what was the range?
So the recommendation, there was, we've had a couple discussions with Moody's. Basically, they want you to have one to two months' worth of operating funds, is the way they look at it, which gives us a range of basically eight-point-three to sixteen-point-six-seven percent of your budget. So in 2019, we were heading up to that peak. We've been anywhere from three percent to, you know, a max of just about that sixteen percent. And now we'll be back in that fourteen to eleven percent. So the Board of Ed, Board of Finance has adopted that policy of being between eight and sixteen and change. So we, that's the range that we're comfortable seeing it in between. It's not quite as high as Moody's would like, but if we look at the towns that are AA2s, it's just below average. If you look at the AA1s, they were on it really kind of between fifteen and twenty.
Okay.
So I don't think at these levels, we'll end up with a raised rating, but, you know, our rating is good, and the rate difference right now, the spread is not that great.
And Mike, if I could just jump in, I just
Please.
To be, to be clear to that, you know, Mike is very accurate in the historical numbers we dealt with with Moody's. We did transition to S and P in the last year as our, as our bond rating agency, and they were happy with these, these thresholds, and they recently confirmed our double-A-plus rating, which is one level below triple-A.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Anything else on Mr. Manjos?
If I could just jump in, I know that, this is something that, Mike, you're going to discuss with your, with the Board of Finance later, but just for the Council's benefit, the draft date that you had thrown out for the capital meeting was going to be April second, so just to get it out there. But again, I think subject to further conversation with the Board of Finance to make sure you're okay with it, we can circle and circle back with the Council when you finalize that. And the only other note I just
Exactly, you know, we just wanted to put something out there to propose, and then we'll talk about it.
Yep, and then I just wanted, I was just making a note as you were going through, I just wanted to also just comment, you had mentioned the challenges with revale years and contingency. I just wanted to, since today was the last date for assessment appeals to be filed, I did speak with the assessor after four-thirty, and he is still with the contingency that we built into the mill rate, the grand list, the mill rate calculation based upon the volume and overall dollar amount of the assessment appeals that have been filed. So we are comfortable with that at this point. It's still very early in the process, obviously, but he's, he thinks we're in good shape.
Okay, good to hear.
Anything else? Seeing nobody, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to end this discussion.
I was going to say, nobody else on my side wants to say anything? Come on.
You said it all, Mike, what else do you want us to say?
John said you said it all.
I heard him. He thinks I'm too wordy, but that's okay. No, I just want to make sure, again, I don't, you know, we tend to think fairly similarly. I mean, obviously, we have a lot of discussions about these things, so we've got a pretty good feeling of, you know, what we all think and how we all feel about this kind of stuff. We are typically very financially conservative. You know, we're not big fans of kicking things down the road, we're not big fans of taking a lot of risk. We do believe in putting contingencies in place because we understand that there are challenges to budgeting, especially when you're looking, you know, a year and a half out. So all those things will be involved in our discussions, and I think we do think very much alike on those kind of things. So hopefully, we'll continue our tradition of being very closely aligned and, you know, hash everything out along the way.
Okay, so seeing no one, I thank you a lot, Mr. Manjos.
It's always my pleasure, and again, if anything else comes up along the way, you obviously know how to get ahold of me, and if you need me at some session or anybody from our team. from our team, then please, uh, don't hesitate to ask.
Okay, so we're ending this meeting at, uh, six-thirty.
Well, we're going to go recess, right?
Yeah, we're going to recess, right.
Well, you said add, so I was going to
That's what I meant. We're going to recess, this is six-thirty-two. Uh, the next, the, uh, couple of, here, we'll start at seven PM. We can't, we don't, we cannot just go into it because we're waiting for people to come at seven PM. So that's our recess. All right.
Great, thanks, thanks, DeeDee. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Go. But it's at six PM, so I'll have to call in.